I call this meeting of Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the Board of Education meeting room. I would like to recognize all of our visitors in the room and online. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This is Mrs. Spurlock's kindergarten class who won the Golden Luntrey Award with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I have Mr. Jones call the roll, I have a couple of announcements. The first is I'd like to congratulate Board members, Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Engel, on their recent reelection to the Board of Education. And second, I would like to read a little something. In October, our board attended the Ohio School Boards Association Fall Conference and Dinner. Often at these events, we are seated with other school districts, board members. This fall, we had the pleasure of meeting OSBA President-elect Sally Green from Tuscarawas County, Tuscarawas Valley School District. Mrs. Green shared about her district, and we shared about ours. And she even asked to be invited to the Kirkersville Elementary ribbon-cutting. This past Tuesday, three students, one teacher, and two parent chaperones from that same school district lost their lives in the tragic accident on I-70 while traveling to the OSBA Capitol Conference to perform in the Student Achievement Fair. The tragedy of these events are unthinkable and soul-crushing. At this time, I would ask you to please join me in a moment of silence and remembrance and support of our friends in Tuskegee Valley Schools and the lives of John Mosley, Jeffrey Rorall, Kaitlyn Owens, Dave Kennett, Kristy Gaynor, and Shannon Wigfield. Thank you. Mr. Jones, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Present.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here. We have one person for public participation, Leslie Niedelski, speaking on the committee that reviewed the things they carried.
Hi, my name is Leslie Niedelski. I live at one zero two eight four McIntosh Road in Pataskla. I often watch these board meetings online, and this is a little disconcerting. I did see, I was looking through the board agenda last night, and I saw that Mr. Burge was going to speak about the appeal to have the things that we carried, the things that they carried, removed from Watkins curriculum. I was honored to be chosen as a member of the community, to be a part of this community, this committee that reviewed the book. Prior to our meeting, we were given an email from Mr. Burge with some of his concerns. It was well thought out and was something to certainly discuss. Mr. Burge had issues with the language in the book, and he felt that he held the high moral ground to solely determine if this book was worth reading. I took an afternoon and read the book prior to the meeting, so I knew what we would be discussing. If I was going to discuss the merits of keeping a book in the curriculum or not, I felt it was important to read it. I had talked to my children about the book, and one had read it in class and spaded it was one of their favorite books. As the meeting began, another email from Mr. Burge was read. It contained more of his concerns about the book, bad language, desensitization from killing in a war, and violating the moral compass of families. The email stated that there was nothing good about this book, and it served no purpose, and only showed a subjective truth framework. I was surprised to learn that Mr. Burge had not read the book prior to asking for it to be removed from the curriculum. I didn't quite understand how you can have moral complaints about a book without reading it. I also wondered if Mr. Burge talked to English staff to find out what the educational purpose of this book was and why educators feel it is important. During the meeting, I felt as though we discussed the book at length. We addressed some of the language in the book and whether it was appropriate for 10th grade honors English students. I personally felt that a memoir about war would read awkwardly without real conversation between soldiers. We discussed the writing style of the book, which is unique. While I was not a fan of the writing style, I saw that the merits that this was worth studying. We also discussed some of the specific stories from the book Mr. Burge alluded to in his complaint, a story about corpses and fellow soldiers getting killed. It was a poignant story with an amazing imagery. Was it easy to read? No, but it was a story about a friend being killed. I asked the English staff involved in the meeting what books could replace the things they carried to offer equal learning experience. The staff was struggling to find a replacement. They said due to the uniqueness of the book, finding something equivalent was going to be hard. I also asked how replacing this book for just one student would affect how they would be able to participate in class. I was interested to learn that while the book is read over the course of most of a quarter, it was not the sole topic of conversation. Therefore, the student would not be missing valuable participation in the English class. They would only be missing the value of the experience of the book. They would not have the understanding of how the vignettes in the book threaded together to create a complete novel, how the author saw life in his participation in a war. I have gone back and found the email that Mr. Burge sent to the committee prior to discussion. He cites concerns with content, language, and the offensiveness of the content of the book. He states that just because the language in the book is something the kids would say or hear going down the hall of the school is not good enough reason for a book to be assigned. That is very true. However, a memoir written in this unique style is 100% a good enough reason for this book to be assigned. There are other books or movies that are assigned and shown in our classrooms that may have questionable content. Are we supposed to remove anything from our curriculum that may be offensive to any member of our community?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Our district has an amazing policy to allow parents to remove their students from doing something they feel is inappropriate. And Mr. Burge has taken advantage of this option. He has seen a book that he would not like his student to read, therefore, his student is not going to read the book. If there was another book that he didn't want them to read, he can continue with this option. There was a movie being shown in class he felt was inappropriate. He could remove his student from watching the movie. And this is how it should be. If I don't like something, I don't want to watch, read, or do it. And that is my option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, adoption of agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item two, presentations. We have a continuous improvement plan for Watkins Memorial High School.
So hi, I'm Dustin Cullen. I am the proud principal at Watkins Memorial High School. Along with me tonight, Mr. Joel Baker, Assistant Principal, and Mrs. Kristen Coleman, Assistant Principal. They're a huge part of our team, so I'm glad they're here to share in this with me. Collectively, we are so proud of what our students and staff are already accomplishing this year, but we also know that we have growth and we have some goals in place to achieve that growth. First, we're looking at our student learning goal. Within this goal, we have our TBTs working together to analyze student data to inform their instruction. Oftentimes, our core subjects have common assessments at the end of unit tests and that type of thing. And teachers use that time and TBTs to look at results and work together to inform their instructional practices. The admin team is also working with teachers through the OTEST process to emphasize their literacy goals and emphasize the importance of learning and reading every day in the classroom. The admin team is also working with teachers and TBTs to look at their state test performance data. This first slide here is an example, or this is from 2022, but this would have actually been the spring of 2021 test scores. These are just for our Ohio State Test Core courses. So we talk about Biology, U.S. History, Government, Algebra One Geometry, and ELA Two. So at that time, we had 25 teachers that taught at least one section. And as you can see, 84% of our students met at least average growth or higher. So we only had 16% of students that fell below and did not meet at least their average projections. This data is from last year, so this is 2022 testing season in the spring. And at this point, we had 30 teachers who were teaching these courses, and only three percent, or 10%, or three teachers had classes in which the students did not reach their average growth. So, you know, 90% of our teachers are getting students to at least meet average growth with their projections. And I think 43% being above growth is a pretty awesome number. So shout out to our staff members. Now, what do we do with this data? On a more individual basis, we meet with teachers to look at their specific data for these tests and talk about their, you know, some trends, talk about what strategies they have used that have made them successful. And then we encourage them to go back to their TBTs to talk about, you know, their test scores with each other and help each other out as far as what parts of the test did they do poorly? What parts of the test did they do well? And come together to work on some common strategies to move everybody forward. And then unfortunately, sometimes we do have to set improvement goals if things aren't going as planned. But again, our TBTs are awesome, helping each other out and helping each other move forward. As far as our student experience, this goal is dedicated to making sure that our students feel a sense of belonging and give them an opportunity to earn some rewards for positive behavior. Same thing with our staff. We're trying to put some things in place to reward our staff for doing great things in the classroom. The one in particular I want to focus on would be Strategy Two. The PBIS team, which Kristi and Joel are a huge part of, the PBIS team came up with a new program this year that we just rolled out called the Ultimate Warrior. Essentially, there are five different areas in which they can earn merit. So you have the honor roll, which is 3.0 GPA or higher, perfect attendance, less than three tardies, that's either to school or to class, no discipline referrals, and a positive behavior referral from a teacher. And we're doing this quarterly so that students that maybe don't achieve this in the first quarter might be motivated to achieve it in the second quarter. If you earn three of these, three of the five criteria, you get a card with five punches on it. Four criteria earns you a card with 10 punches. And five criteria earns you a card with 15 punches. Okay? So the cards look like this. On the front, you see the front there, name, quarter, valid through. And on the back, there is a QR code. Now, I'm going to hand one of these to each of you. Now, this is a black card, which is the middle. So you've only achieved four, not five, of the criteria. Now, it's honor system for each of you. So if you think back to like your junior year of high school, and you want to think about like, okay, of those five things, how many of those did I achieve? Well, allowing you to come to the high school and use your cards if you've achieved four. If you haven't, you're going to have to hand it in for a white card, which is only three. Okay, so think about that. Now, on the back, that QR code, when the students scan it, it gives them this list of the incentive program rewards. So the thing about this list is that it's a Google Sheet, so we can update it live any day we want to. So as, say, community partners come in and say, hey, we have some things we want to donate, we can update it to the list. We have teachers that come to us and say, hey, we would like to add this to the list because I want my students to be able to, you know, get an extra day on an assignment. We can add that to the list. So this is just the start. You can see there toward the end of the quarter, it's kind of heavy. They're, you know, 12:15-ish because students are going to want to like cash in their tickets for these rapid prizes. So we kind of want them to exhaust the tickets each quarter so that then we can reassign them, you know, the following quarter. There's a few things missing on here. You know, we've talked about, you know, the admin team having a table at lunch with some gifts and prizes and things just so we can have more positive interactions with the kids. But, you know, it's, in my mind, in our mind, we see it as something that could be more community-wide. We can partner with some businesses and maybe give them a sign that sits in their window that says, you know, supporter of Southwest Looking Schools. And maybe the kids can get a discount there on either food or whatever it is that they're selling. So it's just a start, and maybe 100. So how did this go first quarter? We had 89% of students that had less than three tardies. 95% of students had no discipline referrals. We had 175 of perfect attendance. Technically, 820 on the honor roll. We broke that down a little bit further just so you can see how high achieving these students have been this year. And we tasked our staff with being more, trying to be more deliberate about positive behavior referrals because that's something that they, we kind of naturally don't do. You know, we just kind of acknowledge it in the moment, but we don't actually take the step to recognize it. And we had 458 positive behavior referrals. So what that came out to? 501 students got a card for a white card, which is five punches. 295 got a black card, which you have in front of you with 10 punches. And 43 students met all five of those and got a punch card with 15 punches to use this quarter. I say all that to say, we're making an effort to have positive reinforcement of positive behaviors at the school because we spend a lot of time with the negative behaviors. And our hope is that this will help our building's culture and that students will start acknowledging the fact that, oh, I'm seeing my friends get all these extra things because they're doing the right thing. And it may motivate them, you know, to bring that GPA up a little bit or to not be targeted class this much and that type of thing. Last thing here before I close, I just want, I feel a little obligated as the building leader to tell you that we have an amazing staff and amazing students at our school. My frame of reference is a little different because obviously I'm new here. I've only been here four months. But I'm greatly enjoying my time in the building. We have a hard-working staff and a great group of kids. They're very kind, they're very polite. That is a testament to every educator that is in this district that has seen them and worked with them until they've gotten to the high school. I've been very impressed and I'm very grateful to be here. And that's all. Any questions?
I'd just say, I like the push. I love the push for the positive behavior incentives. I think that's great. You know, because a lot of times, you know, those kids are overlooked. And I like that we're being intentional about servicing them and giving them something to look forward to, so I appreciate that. So just roughly, what, 75% of the students received some sort of a card, right? I just quickly did the math. Eight hundred, yes. Okay, so the 25% that aren't, obviously, there's some sort of issue there. Are we, is there a chance for them to say, earn maybe, to earn maybe like three punches or some? Is there a way that they also could be included in this somehow with, like, they could earn it? Or, I don't know, I just was looking at it for like, how we include all students into this school-wide program?
Originally, we had thought about doing a card for the year. And as we thought more about that, we thought about, okay, if you don't hit it right off the bat, then you're pretty much out of luck for the rest of the year. So that's why we decided to go to quarters. I would say if a student came to us and said, man, I really want a card, we're going to encourage them to work hard to get that card the next quarter. But at this point, though, we don't have anything in place.
Thank you.
I should probably turn mine in for five.
I was going to say, are you?
Thank you for your honesty.
Are you going to check? He said junior year, not senior year, right?
I do have one more quick thing before we close. It's not related, but it is sort of related. Emily Owen is a science teacher at WMHS and a product of Tuskegee Valley Schools. Her mother is still a teacher in the district. And when I talked to Emily on Tuesday during the day and asked her if she wanted to leave, she said she wasn't really sure there was much she could do, so she wasn't. She took the day off Wednesday to go and be with her mother and actually went to school with her mother to be there for those elementary kids where her mother teaches. She talked to her former teachers, and she had a conversation with the superintendent. The superintendent had said to her that, he knew that she was down here somewhere in Columbus, but wasn't sure where she was. And when she told him that she was from Southwest Looking, they both became very emotional and shared a hug. She told me that he said that he was so grateful that the leaders in our district supported their people, like our own, until they could get here, and asked her to profusely thank you. I asked Emily if it was okay to share this tonight, and she said it was okay. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now, we're up to Pataskla.
Hi, everybody. Katie Pugh-Wady, I'm the principal of Pataskla, and I don't have any punch cards with me. Tonight, I'd like to share our Building Continuous Improvement Plan as well as progress that we've made since we presented our plan last year. Our rating on this school's report card was a four, which exceeds state standards. On both achievement and early literacy, we received a rating of three, which meets state standards. We continue to see students move off track to on track on our fall reading diagnostic, especially from kindergarten to first grade. We do see a dip from first to second grade, but as it was discussed at last month's board meeting, second grade is the first year that students are required to read the test on their own. The last component of the report card is gap closing, which we received a rating of five, significantly exceeding state standards. The gap closing component is a measure of the reduction in educational gaps for student subgroups. So the first part of our CIP focuses on student learning. We continue to provide professional development and opportunities for collaboration on the science of reading approaches and using student data to inform instructional planning. The district has done a fantastic job of structuring waiver days to provide specific professional development in areas that have helped our teachers continue to grow as strong reading instructors. Not only have we brought in Dr. Stephanie Stoller, who is an expert in all things reading, but we have also trained multiple staff members in all three elementary buildings on the Orton-Gellingham approach to reading. These staff members have then been able to provide in-house PD to their colleagues and our fantastic resources as we continue to build and apply knowledge about the science of reading. The next one talks about MTSS. Our MTSS meetings continue to improve as we work to identify very specific deficits and provide targeted interventions and progress monitoring. A big part of this improvement is the district's use of Acadians and core phonics screeners. These assessments have allowed our teachers to get detailed data on specific areas of reading that they can be targeted through classroom interventions and supported by our primary literacy specialists. The last action step for student learning talks about the use of vertical trend data to determine root cause and instructional gaps and to develop action steps. For this action step, we wanted to see three years of just Pataskla data, meaning three years since we moved back to neighborhood schools. And this school year is the third full school year of just Pataskla students. So we look forward to getting our spring state testing results and looking at patterns and trends over the last three years. One thing to note about this is this is also the first year that we're using 95%, which is our new reading program. So I think it would be fair to say we want to be cautious while looking at trend data with a new, with a brand-new program. However, I do want to note that we are really happy with the level of rigor that 95% is providing our students. And I know that you've heard that from Brad and Susan when they presented their plans as well. We have kindergarten students who are blending words, and they have been for weeks. The amount of pencil and paper comprehension exposure and application of phonics rules has been incredible to see. So I'm looking forward to seeing student growth with this program. The second part of our CIP focuses on student experience. We're continuing to find ways to provide students with a wide variety of experiences in an effort to increase background knowledge and provide exposure to different fields, content, and learning paths, even at the elementary level. Some examples planned for this year include an author illustrator visit from Jonathan Miller, a performance by Columbus Children's Theater, STEM assembly provided by The Works, going to see the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, and inviting students in to discuss different careers. We really want to provide as many experiences as possible, especially for those students who might not otherwise have the opportunity to do so outside of school. The next part of student experiences centers around the implementation of PBIS. This year, our PBIS team is really focused on data collection for student behavior. Teachers are using classroom data tracking that is then used to create targeted instruction for groups of students. We continue to administer a tiered fidelity inventory that assesses how we're doing overall with PBIS and allows the team to address specific areas of the inventory. We continue to train new staff in PACS, which is our universal classroom management approach. We're still using Character Strong to teach SEL, and we focus on a character trait each month. Students from each class are recognized monthly for demonstrating that book's character trait. We've also been incorporating quotes, challenges, and reminders about these traits on daily announcements to reinforce the importance of those skills. The last action step for student experience, last action steps for student experience discuss attendance and community partnerships. We've been more intentional this school year about sharing attendance data with staff and brainstorming ways to address attendance. This year, we are trialing an activity called Attendance Matters Surprise Days. We are choosing one random day each month to provide students with an experience or reward for attending school that day. Our first Attendance Matters Day provided students with a dance party by DJ Popo during recess. That was actually just Mrs. Poe with beats on. Students really seem to enjoy this, and we are looking forward to future Attendance Matters Surprise Days as we continue to communicate with students and families about the importance of attendance. Community partnerships continue to grow as we are able to provide so many services and resources for our families. We hosted a Back to School Bash in August that was attended by 15 community and district resources. Families were provided free school supplies, clothes, and books, and had access to organizations such as Leeds, Triple P, the Y, NIAP, and Neighborhood Bridges. While our Back to School Bash was the biggest example of community partnerships, we also work with individual families to provide wraparound services and resources. So overall, I believe we're continuing to get better each day, and I look forward to providing future updates on student learning and student experiences. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, request to speak on agenda items, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, my name is Corey Ford. I live at 701 Osborne Drive. I hope that we can all agree here that our school district serves the community, and in return, the community funds the school district through public dollars at the state, local, federal levels. It is important to remain consistent with this premise as we create policy. The board is tasked with Ohio law with prescribing curriculum. Under ORC 3313.60, the Board of Education of each local school district shall prescribe a curriculum for all schools under its control. The board is tasked also with determining textbooks. 3329 and O7008 says, "The Board of Education of each local skilled district shall determine by a majority vote which of such textbooks or electronic textbooks shall be used in the schools under its control." The law is clear. The board is responsible for prescribing the curriculum and determining the textbooks, electronic or otherwise. This is in keeping with our premise that the district serves the community. Where permitted, the law allows the board to appoint a superintendent or designee to a duty that the board enjoys. Neither of these statutes allow a school board to delegate this responsibility. Once the duty is prescribed to a curriculum, to prescribe curriculum or adopt textbooks, is delegated to an employee of the board, the district now has the authority to dictate to the community what it will teach. This undermines our premise. When a parent or guardian asks that their child not engage with objectionable material, that is a day-to-day issue and well within the realm of the superintendent and their subordinates. That is item one of the policy you're considering tonight, and I see no reason to change it. When a community member requests material be evaluated for fitness in our school under your charge, it is clearly your responsibility to approve. You should not approve a policy that imposes a committee or other bureaucratic controls that cede control of the curriculum over to the district. Policy, time is going to be short, so let me address some common misinformation talking points that will be used to debunk what I just said. It is true that Ohio law grants a wide latitude to the board to make any rules that are necessary for its government and the government of its employees. Ohio law does not allow school boards to Ohio law does not allow school boards to adopt rules to shirk duty and violate their oath of office. The superintendent is a professional hired by the Board as an advisor to manage the day-to-day activities of the district. Evaluating the appropriateness of curriculum and text are not day-to-day decisions. It has come up in the last board meeting that twice in the last several years, a member of the community has objected to curriculum material. It's not a day-to-day thing. School staff are the educational professionals and know better than the average citizen how best to educate the student of the community. That is true. And they can educate the students in accordance with the curriculum and materials approved by the community indirectly through their Board of Education. Ohio law dictates standards for the school district. Our own district and the Ohio Department of Education have long differentiated between standards, what a student must know, and curriculum, what a student is taught. The law does not dictate the controversial material to be used to teach because it is not dictated what students must be taught. Standards are not curriculum. On that note, when a parent requests to inspect curriculum, we should not be pointing them to the state standards. One of your policies says the Board does not permit any individual or group to exercise censorship over instructional materials and library collections. Yes, you do. You have three policies, IIAA, IIAB, IIAC, that grant authority to the superintendent and their designees through the process of whitelisting materials. With my last 53 seconds, I'm going to ad lib a little bit. Earlier this week, I sent you an email that the form that parents have to fill out to request to review material looked more like it was a character assassination of the person filling out the material than it was the person, the material that they were objecting to. Ms. Nudelski made my point by standing up here and speaking a lot about the character of another citizen and didn't say much about the material question. We teach students professionally, and I find it hard to believe that an entire Library of Congress doesn't contain one book about war that doesn't contain graphic material. Maybe you aren't working hard enough for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Request to speak, Teamsters, Southwest Looking Education Association. Thank you. Item five, approval of minutes. We have a regular meeting October 19th and a special on October 31st.
Motion, approval, five A and B.
Second.
Any conversation? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item six, financial report.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Included PAC is the financial report from month of October 31st. Really, the only thing is, we did receive our second income tax settlement, and it was significantly lower than we projected, approximately 10% lower. It was actually about $30,000 lower than last October's this time. Majority of that difference is, you know, I had about 10%, 8-10% increase in the budget. So when I went for our last two settlements, I've just taken it back to zero, equal what they are for last year, hoping that we'll get close to last year because we had two straight settlements that were lower than we expected. You know, we had a 13% increase for '21. Basically, for '22, we had a 16% increase, and now we're looking at maybe a zero, which is kind of odd, a little strange here, but so we just gotta keep an eye on that as we do the last two settlements that come in January than April. So other than that, it was a fairly routine month, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item seven, personnel consent calendar. We have A through I.
Motion A through I.
Second. Dr. Perkins?
The only thing to add noteworthy, we have a couple of teacher retirements coming in early. That's to avoid the, they don't have to be evaluated then, so it makes sense if you know you're going to be retiring this year to turn that in. Other than that, there's nothing substantial on there to share. And we'll recognize them in the spring, obviously.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item eight, we have business items A through G, but I believe we need to pull out item E.
And we need to add an H on there.
And we need to add a H.
Should have H next to it, yeah.
We want a motion to approve A through D and F through H?
We probably need to officially make H a part of the agenda, right?
Yeah, because H is not on there.
It's there. It just doesn't have a letter next to it.
It's just missing a letter.
Okay.
It is, it's the school calendar.
We're good. There it is.
Well, it's not on mine.
Yeah, it's not on this one side.
Let's get refresh, it's there now.
Yeah, it should be there.
Amazingly little refreshing days, right?
Well, now I have to log in again.
All right, so.
Seriously, I have to log in again. Hold on. Actually, no, I don't. Okay.
All right, so.
A through D, F through H?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Well, A is an appeal or a complaint. I don't know if you.
So we want that separate?
Yeah, we thought that would be that separate.
Yeah, that should be a separate.
All right, so what's the motion?
Motion B through D and F through H.
So A through D, F through H, okay.
B.
B through D.
B through D, F through H.
All right, good.
Did someone motion?
I did.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
So did you discuss it real quick?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So policies, do you want to talk about policies?
Are we doing B first?
Yes.
B.
Only, I do want to point out one thing in the policies. Obviously, we discussed these last month. I do want to note a change in KLB that was recommended from the Board. If you pop open KLB, you'll see there's been a change in C, which is actually an addition. The sentence that's green has been added in an effort to maintain an unbiased review committee. The complaint will be shared with the committee, but the complaint will not be a part of it. So that's just an addition based on last month. Otherwise, there's nothing else to share for policies.
C is a new truck for our transportation department, plow snow to replace one that's falling apart. D is to purchase three school buses. Obviously, we have to order them, so it won't be here till maybe the next school year, but we get them ordered in sooner or better.
Are those to replace buses or to add?
I assume at this point they're going to be replacements, but I haven't been told that for sure, not if Ryan's here or not, but I assume it's all going to be replacing school buses.
I can do E. So E is a motion to per.
He's not part of it.
Oh, it's G, what letter are we on?
So we're on FGH.
F, okay, F's easy. Based on talking to Leneer Crawford, he wants to continue having Jennifer Ashbrook as his rep for the Potasko Library Board of Trustees, so unless anyone has a.
If you want to go ahead and talk about H, then I'll go back to G.
Yeah, that's fine. You want to take one of these and pass it down? So this is the recommended calendar for next school year, the 24-25 school year. I did work with SLE Leadership on this calendar. I think that overall, the teachers will be really happy. We made some changes to conferences based on recommendations from them. We also made, we added in, it seems like a lot of districts have worked in. We have back that little bit of a fall break with a long weekend. So just a couple of different things that were recommended by teachers that we were able to finagle in the calendar. So nothing substantial, but just some small changes that I think they will appreciate. So I don't have anything else in discussion-wise unless you guys have any specific questions.
Letter F, who did you say we were recommending for the Potasko Library Board?
Jennifer Ashbrook.
That's not the name on here.
It's not?
No.
That's not, that's not the right name. I don't know who that person is.
All right.
So we need to.
I didn't put that there. It's Jennifer, oh, I'm sorry. That's my fault.
Okay.
I'm thinking about this.
You're doing the Parks and Rec board, aren't you?
Yep, I'm doing the Parks and Rec, yep, sorry. That is correct.
Okay.
My apologies, that's right.
You're good.
So Linda Dahlgarn for the Potasko Library.
Yes, yes, and then we have Ashbrook for Parks and Rec. Yeah, my apologies.
But that's not on here.
Nope.
And then G deals with insurance renewals. So health insurance, thankfully, last school year, we had a very good year, and we were able to negotiate a maximum 12% increase. This coming year, well, this coming year, we had a horrible year. You know, we, ideally, without this, we would have saw about 31% increase.
Wow.
We were about $1.2 million on the bad side.
Okay.
So we had a really bad year insurance-wise. So with the cap, obviously, they had to honor the 12%, which is, thank goodness, because we're hoping to have a better year, but that's, 12% is really, it's good, as far as I'm concerned, compared to what it would have been based on our experience last, well, this calendar year, '23. So dental was a renewal with no increase, vision, no increase, and life insurance is a small decrease. So they went through the insurance committee, and the insurance committee recommends staying with current carriers at these rates.
What does that, what does that look like, you know, for employee pay period premium? What does that look like?
It's about $40 a month, or about $20 a check.
More for family?
For family, is that?
More than it is now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so basically, for a family coverage, it costs an employee $20 more a month, or $20 a check more.
When do we renegotiate companies again?
We do it every year. Obviously, with how bad we ran, nobody else really wanted to be, because we were, I think we were about 130%, you know, so over 30% more than the premium we paid. So it was a huge loss for Medical Mutual this past year. So we go out every year. Like, and this year, we're so bad, nobody wanted to go.
Do you factor the percentages into the five-year forecast, like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the current one we talked about, we'll have the 12% factored into it, and then, usually I have 10% in the forecast.
For future?
I did bump it to 15% this year because, for future years in this forecast, just because, you know, I hope that we have a much better year and/or.
Can, sorry?
No, please.
Can Medical Mutual change that cap at any given time, or is that like?
Yeah, there's no cap this coming year.
Okay.
They guaranteed a cap for two years in a row if we got the, if they got the business like two years ago, right?
Yeah, they did like an 8% year before, then this year is a max of 12. But for '24, the new county, they're not going to do a cap, so.
So we don't have any.
We don't have any protection. It's all based on usage.
Not with them, but.
It could be, yes. You can always, we'll go to market. It just depends, obviously, if it's going to be a 30%, we'll definitely go to market no matter what, but we just hope for a better year. I mean, we just had some high claimants, and in the end, claims are claims.
That's what insurance is.
That's what, yeah, so if you're going to use it, the rates are going to go up, so. Any questions on B through D or F through H?
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Now we are going back up to business item A. Appeal of the superintendent's decision of a public complaint about the curriculum or instruction materials.
Dr. Perkins, can you just get a little up to now, where we've been up to now?
Yes, so we had a public complaint about one of the novels taught in our 10th grade, Honors English Class, and per district policy, based on when that happens, I put together a committee to review the complaint. The committee then, a committee comprised of teachers, admin, and community members, then makes a recommendation to me. With that information, I can either uphold that recommendation or overturn it. In this case of the situation, I upheld the committee's recommendation to not remove the book from the class or the district. Do you need additional clarity, or was that?
So I did read the book, and I looked at it from an almost creative writing minor in college. And I was blown away at all of the different concepts that were being taught through this book. You've got illusion, contrast, metaphors, irony, I mean, a wealth of stuff, paradox. To me, it was, it was a roller coaster of knowledge, of all of the different concepts somebody can read and somebody can gain from it. In my mind, that knowledge outweighs words, bad words. I, I believe we should keep the book 100%. I'll make a motion to uphold the superintendent's decision.
Do we have speakers for this? Is this a speaking thing?
Oh, he's appealing it, so it's up to you if you want to let him talk, and I'd.
I mean, we have the presentation, right? Did everybody review?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see. There's a lot of work in this.
How does it work?
Can I ask a question? Is that okay?
Mr. Jones, how does it work if we allow him to talk? Is it five minutes, or is it, I don't know how this works. We've never had, I haven't had an appeal as Board President before.
This is the first time, I remember, I've ever had one, so.
Oh, okay.
So I'd assume if you want to let him talk, you can talk to, you know, you as Board is satisfied you have enough information to move forward or to make a decision on either uphold or overturn, which is, again.
Okay, Mr. Burge, if you want to ask your question, that'd be great. Please stand at the microphone, so.
I was prepared to speak. Mr. Jones alluded to the fact that I would be able to speak in my communication with him prior to the meeting, so I came prepared to speak and present my appeal. So I don't know how I present an appeal not being heard, so I would appreciate the time.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I really do appreciate you taking the time to make my appeal for the book, Things They Care to Be Removed From Assigned Reading Material in Our School District. Before I start, I would like to take a second to congratulate Board members Katie Engel and Deborah Moore on their recent reelections.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I look forward to seeing how we can continue to improve our school district and for our students and the community. Board members, community members, and friends, I'm extremely sorrowful that we are here tonight having to appeal to you and the Board for the removal of this book. I think this is a symptom of much larger, of much larger issues, and I'm hopeful that we will eventually get to a solution to those larger issues. I'm here because I care about the youth of our community, and particularly my own children in the district. As I mentioned last meeting, I have four children in the school district, spread out from kindergarten to sophomore class. I have volunteered in high school ministry for about 10 years, coached sports for over five. So I personally witnessed the drastic decline in school-aged children's mental health and a continuing decline of morality in the education systems in general. My hope is that our district will be a beacon to other districts and reverse that trend. I want everyone to know that I'm here out of love for my neighbors. This includes the children in our district, my own children, and our whole community, including the staff, teachers, administrators, and Board members. I heard an analogy recently, and I believe it is perfect for this situation. When you have children, they are young, and they're playing outside. One of them starts for the street, and you see the car zooming down the street at the same time. What do you do? You yell and scream as loud as you can, right? Not because you're mad at them or hate them, but because you love them so much that you Not because you're mad at them or hate them, but because you love them so much that you can't help but yell. Friends, board members, this is the situation at hand, and I can't be quiet. I want to keep children safe from the destruction that they are in danger of. So, I've given each of you a copy of the slide deck I prepared, and we'll go through it as quickly as I can. If anyone would like a copy of it, just let me know, and I'll be happy to send it to you. As I'm going through this, if there's something that isn't clear on your copy, feel free to stop me, and I can read it for you, or I can show you what I'm looking at. So, just the title page there, we're talking about the book, The Things We Carried. Ms. Moore said she has read it. It's by Tim O'Brien. The book has won some literary awards, and it may be a literary feat. I will admit right off the bat that I have not personally read the whole book, or even a significant portion of it. But I don't think one needs to do that, to make the judgment that this book is not meant for and does not belong in a high school educational setting. So, first, we'll look at the content of the book, and then talk through consistency... The consistency of policies. I will share the eight points that I submitted to the superintendent's review committee, talk through a few questions or concerns of mine, review the committee's findings and the superintendent's agreement, and I will share my rebuttal with the committee, and then wrap up with a closing comment.
Do we know approximately how long this is going to be?
There... There... I was told I have enough time, or is it my appeal?
There's nothing...
Okay.
We have... Already have this documents. We've had them to review, so we've...
Sure.
We've already reviewed that.
I appreciate that.
Okay. So, we don't need... I mean, I'm just saying that we don't need you to read everything that you've written.
Yeah, I don't intend to read everything.
Okay.
So, this would be page three, slide three, the first piece. About the content is the author wrote this book for adults. The highlighted section says, "The Things They Carried" was written for adults, but many teens read it. So, the author said that this book is for adults. This is from, again, this is from commonsensemedia.org, which is the site that Ms. Hickman, the assigning teacher, cited for parents to look up the content of the book and sign a permission slip so that they can read it. The next slide is the rating for drinking, drugs, and smoking in the book. So, it got a three out of five. And it says some references to smoking dope, getting drunk, and taking tranquilizers recreationally. The next one, excuse me, is for violence and scariness. That's four out of five, so that's next to worst rating. It says, "The book is filled with gruesome depictions of firefights, mortar sieges, unexpected explosions, and general death and destruction. There are descriptions of disfigured corpses and details of the visceral feelings associated with killing and dying. For instance, there's a chapter devoted exclusively to telling the story of a man... Of the man... Man, the storyteller, killed with a hand grenade in a bloody aftermath." Then, lastly, about the content, it received a four out of five. Again, that is the worst rating possible on this site. I'm curious what would actually be rated a five out of five, but this is not my scale. The comment for this rating is as follows. "And out of respect to everyone, I will say, if there are children in the room listening online, or your ears are sensitive to profane language, please either turn down the volume, have kids leave the room, or plug your ears." It says, "Lots of swearing and offensive language. Every curse word you can imagine is used, from motherfucker, cocksucker, to pussy, as well as racial slurs such as goop and redskin, and sexist slang such as coos and bitch. I do apologize for that offensive, inappropriate, profane, graphic, and obscene language. It really is embarrassing for me to stand here and read it aloud in front of all of you." Now, this slide, the next one, is a slide that demonstrates the ethical stance of this website, and this is Ms. Hickman suggested for parents. You may have heard of this book, because it has brought some public attention due to it being in schools. The book is All Boys Aren't Blue. Again, I don't know that our school has that book, but this is the website that has been recommended to use the ratings for our books in our schools. The site recommends this book for 16-plus-year-olds. This book contains explicit descriptions of boy-on-boy sexual acts.
I'm sorry, is your appeal on this book, or the Things They Carried?
This is in reference to the site that the teacher referenced to...
If we can focus our comments on the book you are asking to be appealed?
It goes... It ties back to this book.
Okay.
So, that site that we were recommended, recommended that book for 15-plus-year-olds, and then this book for 16-plus-year-olds. This book has explicit descriptions of boy-on-boy sexual acts. I believe this should disqualify this site from being used as a reference for age appropriateness of educational material. So, we'll move to consistency. I think it is obvious to everyone listening that the nature of the language contained in The Things They Carried is not appropriate for educational settings. We have multiple policies that prohibit this language. Two of them are pictured here, policies EDE and ED-R. The language of these policies is as follows. In number one, use appropriate language. Do not use profanity, obscenity, or other language that may be offensive to others. And then, in the other policy, using profanity, obscenity, or other language that may be offensive to another user, or intended to harass, intimidate, or bully other users. So, according to this policy, any student or staff member that has read this book via the school's online services, this policy is specific to online services, should be punished. Now, I guess we have to either define what profanity, obscenity, or other language that may be offensive is, or we are using common sense, and it is still defined traditionally. I am sure our dress code also has this language, and a student or staff member would be prohibited from wearing clothing with these exact words on them. I'm also sure that if a student were to use this language in the principal's office, they would be punished. I know this is true, because Mr. Cullen admitted as such when we spoke on the phone near the beginning of my complaint about the book. And then, just example of a review of this book, you might ask, this book may have some bad language, but how often is it used? Well, according to one reviewer, in the first 70 pages, that F-word occurs seven times, plus 15 other uses of profanity. I will also remind you that the comment on language earlier stated, "Every curse word you can imagine is used in the book." So, the eight points I made to the committee. Number one, I believe we should be consistent and coherent with all school policies when we are assigning materials to students. Consider policies EDE, EDR, both strictly prohibit use of profanity, obscenity, and other language that may be offensive to another. If a student or faculty is prohibited from using this type of language in one area, why would a teacher be permitted to assign such material to their students? Ms. Hickman recommended commonsensemedia.org. I won't repeat myself here. I'll go ahead and skip. But that's just pointing out the ethical stance of the site used to rate the material. And again, I... My third point, I won't repeat all the swear words, because it is embarrassing. But this... This does not seem to even come close to being consistent with the policy mentioned earlier. If a student or staffer read this on a school device, they could, and should be disciplined according to the policies in place. Point four was, please ask yourself this question. Would a sports team be permitted to use music for warm-ups that contain these words? I would imagine that the sports team would likely be reprimanded for doing such a thing. Right? And I know there is tension of censoring books, a sort of hot topic, if you will. I would assert, though, we are censoring content all the time in the educational setting, for good reason. The burden should be on the educator assigning this material. They should have to lobby for an exemption to school policies that prohibit profanity, obscenity, and language that could be offensive to another. Point six that was submitted to the superintendent's committee. I've also heard the position that basically says, "They, the students, hear this type of stuff all the time. They hear it in the halls, on the bus, in movies, video games, and music." Just in case this would happen to be your position, I would like to respond. Just because they may hear it in some settings does not mean they should or ought to consume it in an educational setting. There must be some objective, moral, ethical standards that we consistently apply. The absence of profanity, obscenity, and offensive language should be a minimal standard for the whole district. Would there be any complaints from parents if the assignments did not contain any profane, obscene, or offensive language? The answer is likely no. Would a teacher be allowed to sign a... To assign a book that used racially offensive language, or offensive language towards the LBTQ community? If the answer is no, then there's a double standard. I also know that some have mentioned that it would be hard on Ms. Hickman if she had to change the reading material this late. Sorry. This is... That is unfortunate, but I do not think it is more important than the innocence in moral character of our students. So, concerns, and I would just ask if we could ask these questions to ourselves. What are the implications of taking us down this path? Where is the line when it comes to objectional material? What ethical, moral standards are we using to make judgments on material being assigned and available to our students? Who could make the argument that this book is objectively good for our students? We can't just think from a perspective that only takes into account the different literary features of a book. We have to think about the innocence of our students. We must have some ethical, moral guidelines. Does this book fit proper educational setting guidelines? Again, I apologize if you guys weren't ready for this. I was told that I had this time. I do apologize. So, this is what I received from Dr. Perkins after the review committee convened. So, this is the official position and statement of Dr. Perkins and the school administration at the large. And it reads, "Mr. Burge, the review committee met on 9/28. Mr. Tanszewski read the official request for reconsideration of The Things They Carried to the group. The group discussed how books are selected for inclusion in a class, and how texts are placed on the college board's recommendation reading list. The group discussed the literary merit of the book. The group agreed that the book has literary merit. Mr. Tanszewski noted that a part of the citizen's complaint is that the teaching of the book results in the exclusion of his child from class. The group discussed that when a student's parent requests an alternative text, the student is in the room and included in activities that do not directly relate to the text, including but not limited to vocabulary, writing strategies, grammar, and choice book. The committee members agreed that they have read The Things They Carried and considered the complaint. The committee recommends not removing The Things They Carried from the curriculum. It is my decision to uphold the recommendation of the committee and not remove The Things They Carried from the curriculum, respectfully, Casey Perkins." So, we'll move on to my rebuttal of the committee. Number one, the committee did not address the main complaint about the book, obscene, profane, explicit, graphic, offensive material. There is not an actual list of books that the college board has recommended reading. There are lists that have been compiled over the years of books that have been used on AP exams. None of them are official or endorsed by the college board. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I have not found one. The committee asserted the book has literary merit, but did not provide any support for that claim. Then, they agreed it has literary merit, but we do not know what the agreement was based on. The literary merit would have to supersede objective, ethical, moral guidelines to make the case that the book be assigned. The teacher should have to present the case for a variance to violate all school policies that address profanity, obscenity, and graphic or offensive content. My secondary complaint was that my student would not get the equal opportunity as all other students to participate in class discussions, have the same assignments, and be segregated from the rest of the class during discussions. This would violate the right to an education without discrimination." And the next page is just an example of a list that was compiled of AP books. To highlight, this book in particular has only been used three times in the history of the AP exam, and it has not been used since 2013. So, 10 years ago. The other two years were '04 and '09. So, in closing, I want to say thank you for your patience in listening to my comments. I really appreciate you giving me the time. My hope is that we would be bold enough to make a moral, ethical decision and have this book removed from assigned reading material. I'm not asking for it to be removed from the whole school. I'm asking that children not be forced to read this book and have an equal chance to participate in class. I would love for my daughter to be able to enjoy this class fully with all of her peers and not be isolated, because our family has moral standards that we won't compromise on. This is the heart of it. My daughter is being denied full participation due to being assigned offensive, obscene, and profane material, and every student's innocence would be tainted even more. We have a responsibility to protect our students and give them the best environment to shape moral character without undue influence. We cannot stand idly by and allow this kind of moral attrition to be forced on our community. We will ultimately be held accountable by our Creator. It takes humility to be a leader. A good leader knows when something needs corrected. I hope we have some good leaders that can humbly admit that a correction is needed. And just to remind you about the analogy I started off with. The car is coming, and your child is running toward the street. You yell for them to stop, because you love them. I'm here tonight to protect our kids and our community from the oncoming traffic that may well run them over. I'm yelling, "Stop," out of a love for our community. I also want everyone to know, I'm not here to condemn any individual or call down the wrath of God. I do not... I do want it to be known that there is hope and forgiveness through Jesus' sacrifice on the cross. He is the one who defines morality and purpose, and as elected officials... As elected officials, He holds the key of accountability. May God bless each of you, and thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any discussion, comments, questions?
Yeah, I do. I think... I think when you're looking at... Literary merit is the word that you have to use when you're looking at curriculum. I think that profane language, moral and ethical standards, yes, there's a certain sense of moral and ethical standards, but those might be different. Those may... They's... Those are going to be different, depending on your family, your upbringing, your religious history, so on and so forth. So, I don't know that you can say that there is a black-and-white line of moral and ethical standards that... That... And I'm sure that this is not... I'm not sure that this is going to come across the way I want it to, but for me, and yes, I read the book as well, not all the way through, because I am not a fan of history books and not... Non... But that's neither here nor there. My daughter read it as a sophomore in Honors English. So, she read it. She's like, "Yeah, Mom," you know, whatever.
When was that? We have read it since 2013, then?
Probably, what, 2020, maybe? 2020? She read it, wouldn't it? 21... 19, 2020? Sometime. Oh, and she's an English and history major in college now, so she... She reads this. I hope that when we're making decisions, that... And as a parent, I actually... The traffic concept for me is that my kid is with me, and she's reading this book, and we, as a family, can discuss what we feel is appropriate and what we don't feel is appropriate in our family. But I don't think that that stops you from deciding what's appropriate for your child, or for a whole classroom, or for a curriculum in general. I... You know, we... There was the word... Would we let a book be read that has a racially offensive word in it? Absolutely. I'm hoping that every kid out there reads To Kill a Mockingbird. I'm hoping we've read Uncle Tom's Cabin. I mean, so, yeah, and those have racially offensive words in them. I don't think single, even multiple, words that may be profane. Is the maturity level there for the reader? That's an important concept. We... I've read multiple things after I've read this presentation and, well, but, you know, the question is... Is... Statement I read said, "The novel is an excellent tool for young adults to connect, experience what war is like on a personal level, without having to see it firsthand." In two years, those kids could be... In two years, those kids could be seeing war firsthand. So I don't, that's just where I'm coming from.
I would also add, you know, I'm, I was a teacher for many years, and I taught eighth grade. I'm also the parent of an eighth grader and two juniors in high school. And, you know, what we do in our family is, is personal to our family, and what I may find offensive, other people may not find offensive. And that's okay. That's what makes us unique. But we're here publicly in one place in one school district, and I feel like we have a process in place, and it's been through two layers, but ultimately, the board makes the final decision. So nothing has changed. The board is still making the decision. It's just worked its way through the layers. With that said, I'm comfortable with the, with the process. I, I think that that, that that was good. The main concern I heard, though, was obscene, profane, explicit, graphic, and offensive materials. Offensive, the term, is completely objective. What is offensive to me may not be offensive to you. But what I can tell you is I've taken eighth graders to Washington, D.C., and we've gone to the Holocaust Museum, and they've witnessed and seen things far worse than what was described here. And we, we prepared them for it. And if the parents did not want them to go, then they didn't go on that, or they didn't go to certain exhibits. So, you know, I, there's also, we have, we have to prepare kids for next steps in their life, and if next steps in their life is military, then that's something to discuss. You know, that's something that, you know, we, we need to provide for kids. Experiences beyond the classroom and just to prepare them for that. You know, I'd also say, as, as a teacher, I had my students, when I was teaching American history, they, we read Killing Lincoln by Bill O'Reilly. And I had some students and some families who did not want us to read that book due to the author. And, you know, I, I made adjustments, and we were able to make it work. And I, I, I think that's the theme here. I don't think we need to go down this rabbit hole of censoring books. You know, I've been doing a lot of reading on that throughout the country, and there's been some interesting things going on in Colorado and Utah and other places that, you know, it's not reflective of, of this community and the intentionality of it. So, well, I appreciate you coming up here and talking. Let me finish my point, though. While I appreciate you coming up here and talking, I, I know that that's not easy to do. But, you know, we're tasked by this community to make these decisions, and, you know, I try to weigh everything fairly. I try to look at everything with an open mind and then make a decision. But I just know from my experiences as a teacher and what I've seen, I, I understand the language is offensive, but I'm just, I, I can't see not allowing this book.
I trust the parents of our district will make a decision for their family and what's right for their family. So, again, I make a motion to uphold the superintendent's decision of the public complaint about the curriculum or instructional materials.
Could I please respond to that?
I think we have enough material from you, Ms. Burge. We've heard all your arguments.
I have a point that was not addressed, and so I would love to respond to that if I may.
There's a motion on the table right now, so we'll have to see where that goes first, and then...
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Item B?
We're on E now.
Motion eight E.
I'll second that.
I could start, Rick, if that's fine. Then you can jump in. So, recently, we were approached by some landowners across from the new elementary about a little less than ten acres, nine point seven seven, that their parents were going to be downsizing and selling, and they wanted to see if the school was interested in purchasing that land. So, obviously, we had some conversations around that, spoke with them, you know, did some research on the current prices of acreage and what things are going for, and Rick and I, based on that, felt as if this was a really fantastic opportunity for the school community. You know, the need for potential growth on, on, down the road, whether it be parking, you know, a field house, it's, it's ten acres that would be an area we can use that's pretty much connected to our campus. So, we, that, that's tonight what we're coming to the board with, in hopes that you will approve us to purchase this land. There are a few contingencies in the contract, if you took a look at it, making sure that we do have a satisfactory soil test, wetlands, all of that kind of stuff, so we can make sure we can actually do something with the future land. But bearing there are no issues with that, we'd like to go forward with purchasing it with no, you know, plans for it's there tomorrow, but having that so when we're ready to use it. I don't know if you want to add to that, Rick, or?
No, that's a very good job. They're not making more land, so we get opportunity to buy some that's connected to our existing property. I think it's a good choice to do, to purchase it.
Has the soil testing and wetlands testing or observations been done yet?
No, they've, by understanding last week, they were supposed to go in and mark where they're going to do it at, but it's going to take a couple of weeks to work. So we have, I think we have thirty days or forty-five days to, to get those tests done and back, so.
Right, and I, I do value the, the need for land. My concern has just been the cost of this, so I just wanted to put that out there publicly, so.
And both the superintendent and treasurer are making this recommendation.
Correct, yeah, because we worked on this together.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Item nine, treasurer's items, A through D.
Motion to approve nine A through D.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Clear donations that we always appreciate to, to the school district. There's statements of purpose for additional fundraising or student activity accounts that have presented to treasurer's office. We have amended TFI estimated resources, did, board did approve this last month. We have made some more changes with the new property, really around the new property values that we received from the county auditor, which kind of ties into the five-year forecast. So included on the agenda is the approval of the five-year forecast and authorized submission to the High Department of Education by November thirtieth. A lot of people know there's been a revaluation of property within Licking County. So for the school district, are the residential and agricultural properties increased by forty point one nine percent, and the Class Two, which is industrial, commercial, increased by a hundred and fifteen percent. A very large increase.
Did you say a hundred and fifteen?
Yeah, it's a hundred and fourteen and some change, one fifteen.
Wow.
The school district is on the twenty mil floor. We're not, by law, we're not allowed to go any lower than twenty mils, but we do have three levies that will be affected. The substitute levy will be, the millage rate will be reduced down so we don't collect more because of the new increase in valuation. We only get additional dollars for new construction. Debt service is another one for our debt payments. Again, whatever value is, we have to make that year divided by property values, they're reduced to millage, and same thing with the permanent improvement levy, levy, it will, millage rate will also be reduced on it, because again, we only get additional dollars if there's new construction in that one. So, however, the majority of the twenty mils out of the thirty-one will not be reduced, which has a very large effect on our property taxes, based on what I know as of now, if the legislature makes changes later, I can't predict that. So, we're projected to increase real, real property by four point seven million dollars from last year to this year, and then another four point two million next year. So, you know, about almost nine million dollars, eight million dollar increase in property tax revenue, just because of the increase. But also, there's some new construction built in there. So, that's, you know, that's kind of really the big elf in the room is, you know, will legislature do anything, you know, with, with this? At this time, they have not, and basically, if it does after I have the five-year forecast and we'll make changes, but right now, it's resulting in basically some large carryovers. By end of this year, you know, we got, we hired, what, ten new teachers, twelve new teachers this year?
Eleven.
Eleven new teachers this year, some additional staffing. We have additional staffing in the budget each of the five years, remaining four years. We have raises built, potential raises for negotiations built into it. So even with all that, we're still projecting an eight point five million dollar positive cash flow this year, and then another eight point seven million dollars positive cash flow next year. Then it starts dwindling down mainly because we're flat-lined, essentially flat-lined school foundation. By year five, we're looking at a negative cash flow of one point one million dollars, which means we're spending more than we're getting. Again, that could change with what happened with the school foundation, because we don't know, state only approves two years at a time. So at this time, based on this, you know, we're looking very well, very good. You know, we're, should be in good financial condition. Unfortunately, what's good for us is not always what's best for taxpayers, but they won't see the full brunt of it because of the three levies that will actually, the millage rate will reduce down. So, there'll still be a significant increase, but not a full forty percent increase. It'll be a little less than that. So, other than that, it's a fairly routine forecast. Again, you know, talking to superintendent, you know, we have twelve staff a year in there because we hired twelve last year, eleven this year. We're not getting smaller, we know that. So the staffing, like I mentioned earlier, a fifteen percent increase in insurance, because the way things are going, I'm hoping that's enough. But, you know, I believe it's a conservative forecast, so we'll see how it works out as the year goes on. But right now, we're, we're pretty close to where we anticipate being at this point. I'll be glad to answer any question you have specifically about the forecast, but any changes you want to it or anything, but...
Rick, we trust your judgment. Or I do, anyway.
The biggest difference is the increase in property values. That's really the biggest difference.
Yeah.
Over last forecast this year, I mean, expenditures were actually a little bit lower than the May forecast projected, but just an increase in property taxes, property values has had a major effect on the forecast.
Did I, did I read somewhere, understand that Licking County and other counties in the state, maybe not, were going to have to redo that, that they overevaluated?
Yeah, I haven't, I mean, the county, the legislature was looking at doing some three-year averages versus the one-year average most recent. That, that would probably take legislative action. They're not going to do it on their own, because right now, they're against making any changes because of so much work and how much money they put into it already to get these values. But again, it'll be up to what the legislature does. If they make changes, it will affect our forecast.
And you're okay with twelve staff members?
I think twelve.
Twelve, so far, that is looking?
The last couple of years, that's been fine. We've had ten, but we've had to go over both years, so.
Yeah, so we felt to be more conservative is to up it to make sure we have, and I imagine it's probably going to keep going up.
And that's just teachers. That's not any paraprofessionals or additional staffing for any other department.
We also have twelve teachers, four paraprofessionals, a bus driver.
So, okay, so that is, that's twelve.
Yeah, the twelve is just teachers.
Other ones are in here you just called out.
Yeah, they're all in there.
Four additional paraprofessionals.
Yeah, I just, they're the biggest ones, teachers.
Just making sure.
But yeah, they're all in here.
Because they're not free.
None of this, no, they're not free. And the associated insurance going with them, so, benefits.
Anything else for Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item ten, superintendent's item. It's not plural, so you have one item, right?
Well, I have more, but, first thing coming around here in a second, is a, is a look So, not a lengthy conversation, but just to point out, our August enrollment, which is this poll directly from Dazzle, our student information system, had four thousand eight hundred and forty-three kids. We now have a current enrollment of five thousand and sixteen, so we are officially over the five thousand mark. That's an increase of a hundred and seventy-three since August. So, I'll continue every other month or so to bring this back to kind of show you the trend, but each month so far, you can see in October, it increased to four thousand nine hundred eighty. So, a large jump there from August, October, too, a little bit smaller over the last month, but...
It looks like we have two classes over four hundred, the seventh and tenth grades.
We do, correct. Yes, so that's just kind of an FYI. I'll do this next, then I'll do the big ones last. This is the community compass that will go out to all our parents tomorrow, the community as well, our staff. So, as it's coming around, just a few highlights again, pointing out kind of how the new Patasla South Fork came to be. You know, talking a little bit about the OFCC project at the top, some new visuals, the renderings, which are really nice, of Kirkersville Elementary, as well as the front of Patasla South Fork. And then kind of talking about how we, we got to this process, you know, what our bond, what that bond has done for this district, and then, you know, how Patasla South Fork came to be outside of the scope of that project and working with the OFCC. And then lastly, I've been trying to highlight future developments to help everyone understand what's coming. So, I, I put the residences of Eastwood on next. It's on Route Forty in Reynoldsburg. The reason being is this one has two hundred and sixty-four apartments, and it'll be opening this March. So, that doesn't include, you what?
It went up quick.
It did.
Yeah, it did. And that doesn't include the condominiums or one hundred and fifty-nine or single-family homes, two hundred and forty-eight that will be coming. So, I'd just like to, you know, as opposed to giving this long list for people, that's, you know, kind of overwhelming, trying to show and target where each of the areas are and, and what's coming to the district. So that will go out tomorrow and be shared with everyone. Jeff, you want to surprise me and put one of those up there? Doesn't, nope, don't care. Okay, let's see this one first. Okay, so this is the revised branding guide, just a few tweaks from last time. And basically, I'm putting this up there so we can be, share this with the public and everyone in the room. We, we are ready for the next phase with the branding, which will be, and I can start going through this, which will, you know, obviously, you know, talking about the native imagery and, you know, what will not be used in our logos and kind of how that came to be, our colors. So as we, you know, work on implementation and rollout, and this will be myself, Ross Music, Jeff Cameron will be involved, because we'll be using the technology side of things for how people can ask to use things and how they're able to get the official, you know, documentation or information for what they need. But everyone will need to use the official colors of the district. This goes down even to the word marks. Everything will be required to use the same font. It's just going to really, you know, streamline everything in this district, so when you see, you know, our logos and our branding, you know, that's what we stand for and that's who we are. You know, and our, our warrior logo, and the athletics and the high school use these. And I can slow down, but I'm just kind of going through it, because I know we talked about a little bit before. Secondary marks for spirit wear, for, you know, the high school primarily, the middle A little difference here, and I noticed some people have taken that art department, it's got that little paintbrush, and it's been moved around. People think it's the arrow, but it's actually a little paintbrush. So, that'll be in there as well, as well as the instrumental music.
I know.
I know, it's, it's, yeah, it's small. And then we go into the elementary, so Atona will have their designated, their eagle, their colors. So again, anybody who wants to potentially use our brand and our logos, this is what they'll have to use. Got the Kirkersville Cool Cat in those colors. Patasla Lions, and Mrs. P. Aquadio can work with her team on, you know, what will be changing or staying the same, and we'll add that to this once that time comes for a Patasla South Fork. Our intermediate. And then, just talking about the objective, what the purpose of this is for, so everyone knows, you know, this is, you can pop that down, Jeff. It's just overdue, so we need to, you know, we're a significantly large and growing district, and we have a lot of our information out there, and we need to get everything aligned and professionally done. And again, I cannot say enough about Ross Music's help. You what?
That slideshow said it was seventy-five slides long.
It did? It was not seventy-five slides long.
This one is.
This one is.
This one is.
Okay, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Should we take a rest, Rick? No, I'm kidding. So, okay.
This one was a long read.
Listen, we're not, I'm easy. All right, so here, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to, I'm going to touch on the highlights. I'm going to kind of click through. You can stop me when you want. The, the, the point of this conversation piece tonight is this is our Kirkersville Elementary, our current, well, Kirk that's being renovated, our current playground in the project is a new playground. So they will be receiving the same soft surface handicap accessible playground for all students to use. But this still leaves this playground on site that nothing has been determined as of today what to do with. So I want to share with you, I'm going to, again, go through, point out a few highlights. This was actually done in 2022 inspection, but after, again, how lengthy it was and what you're about to see, I didn't feel the need to have another inspection done at the playground. So Rick and I, and specifically Rick, have tried to figure out exactly how old this playground is. We can't find anything in the archives of the district. We know it's at least as old as Rick, who's been here forever. So it's really old. And the inspector, you'll see that in here too. They say somewhere between 20 and 30. And we're estimating, Rick said, at least 25 years old. So. All right, so let's kind of roll through a couple. I'll point out the highlights before I lose everybody. So obviously the, the pea gravel, pea stone is, is not accessible surfacing. It's not even close to being thick enough, but it's also not appropriate or accessible. Some of these are just documents here. You're going to notice a lot, you're going to see a lot of measuring tapes and arrows. These are all zoning issues. Things that were okay when it was currently installed are not okay now. So when you see that, they're measuring exactly the, the width or length of how far things are apart. And those are things that have to be fixed. And you'll see, I'm not going to point out each one of these, but, so now you can see what those are purpose for. You're talking about hardware. Now, these are things that are easily fixed, okay? We can, the hardware we can take care of. So that's an easy fix. A swing being removed, that's an easy fix. I'm going to make sure I'm getting. Yeah, that's funny. The animal in the railing? Okay. Okay, so again, these are all inappropriate distances. They're not far enough apart. Anytime you see the measuring tape or, in this case, we're back to surfacing, not adequate surfacing below the monkey bars, being on top of wood. Again, this is the distance, which is easy, a picnic table can be moved. New surfacing, so that area right there, again, saying you have to have impact attuning surfacing below that. These are, again, oh, wait a minute here. I feel like I'm, oh, this is the perfect one. Okay. So if you'll notice up there, when you're looking at it, every time you see these little orange, whatever those little things are called. They look like little, yeah, probes, different probes, thank you. That means that's a child's part of their head or body or the torso that can get stuck, okay, in the playground. Like you laugh, like, get ready, here, here they go. Every time you see the orange. Oh, I, I don't want you to miss one. Hold on. Okay. Okay, oh.
And they're, they're different sizes, right?
Oh, they're different sizes.
Something is, whether it's a five-year-old's arm versus a two-year-old's head.
Five-year-old head.
Yeah, that's it, okay.
All of these. Any of those orange. Entrapments were there below. Okay, so that's the bridge not being tight. Some of the stuff is things settling, so what's happening is over time. A lot of stuff has settled, which is making it unsafe. It's also making it lean. You'll notice a lot of those missing pieces. We have a lot of bolts, screws. Some of that could be fixed. All of the openings in the platforms are significantly too large, not up to code. Again, all of these, oops. Anytime you see that, again, it's the openings. The slide doesn't have a crossbar. That's, that's, could be an easy fix. That's not one to worry about. Back to code, the jump off the platform. I mean, that's hazardous. This picture. Shows you how it's not elevated. Again, this is the adjustment over time. Everything's settling. Kind of safety concern. Some broken chains. Some of these things are little, like we could fix that. Oh, that's an important one. These are the mounting holes. So the mounting holes are ripping off. So it's, again, it's the wood over time. Oops. This thing is sensitive. All right, here, and here's where, you know, the, the individuals that, you know, inspected the playground set at best. They couldn't find a building date, 20, 30 years old. With this being a wood structure, it's no different than any 20-year-old wood structure. It's been used heavily outdoors. There's a lot of wood that's missing, damage from age and use. Post is starting to rot and settling, making parts of the playground not level or line up. Many nails have backed out, leaving large gaps. You know, this is missing planks. All these yellow lines are missing wood planks where things used to be and are not anymore. So. Oh, again, missing, missing planks, gaps. Well, I don't know how old you are. I think you're very young. You're very youthful, so I don't know. Okay, 1990. Thank you for that information, 33. So that's, Jeff, you can pop that down if you don't mind. So, you know, we did initially, when this inspection was done, look into fixing, use fixing loosely. It's the, the cost to, I mean, we basically have to start over. You know, I know this is, I know people love this playground in this community. I completely understand that. I don't work at Kirkersville. I'm sure Mr. Weirman or Mrs. Cahill could, you know, attest to this, but it's, it's not safe. It is dangerous for kids. In my personal opinion, my recommendation would be to remove it. It is old and it is beyond a simple repair, hence this 70-some page document. So it would, it would be, I would not be doing my due diligence as leader of this district if I did not make that recommendation that we take down this playground in the safety of kids and they will have a new fabulous, amazing, different, but amazing playground that the kids have been enjoying at all of the other schools. So I wanted to bring that to you.
I'm quite concerned that we're, that we were still using it.
Yeah, no, we probably shouldn't have been, honestly.
And accessibility wise, there's limited accessibility here for students.
Yeah, this is not, this is not accessible for all kids. And we actually haven't put together, the playground committee will be meeting December 6th for Kirkersville. So we haven't, the teachers and the group that will be involved in that haven't picked out all the design. That's still, like, it'll be similar with the soft surface, with things that are accessible for all children to use at the school.
Having Kirkersville teachers put input on that.
Yeah, we have one from each grade level.
Awesome.
Well, as long as they accept the invitation. But yes, one from each grade level.
This is obviously pretty dangerous at this point. Can we put some caution tape around it until we get it down?
Yeah, you can't. It's pretty closed off back there right now.
It is, right. Okay, that's what, that was my question. Can the community get to this at this point?
No, no.
Now that we know how.
No, no, they cannot access it. It's a construction site over there. It's pretty.
Do you need us to vote on this?
I don't think we need to vote. Do you, Rick? I mean, we can't, I, I don't know.
I guess if you don't support a recommendation, it probably wouldn't hurt to have it just in case.
I'll, I'll motion to remove the playground for a more appropriate, just remove this, remove this playground and then the rest will take care of itself. Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Dr. Perkins, did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Item 11, adjournment?
Motion adjournment?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, we are adjourned at 8:39 PM.